Hi, Luke. Did your reason for one?
Here.
Victor Barza?
Here.
Coach Moby?
Here.
Want to make questions?
Here.
Mr. Massimo, we have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, we will move on to prayer and pledge. Mr. Scott?
This is Mr. Kent.
May everyone please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you to see you with many thanks for the blessings you continue to bestow upon us. We are humbled and grateful for all those that are in attendance tonight for the opportunity to serve the East Central community. Thank you to our school board members for their countless hours and dedication to ECISD. As we meet tonight, please continue to grant us wisdom and discernment as we make decisions that impact the students, the staff, and the entire district. Please provide your heads of protection around all of those in attendance and guide us home safely as we leave tonight. It is in his name we pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. We'll move on to item five, public, award, excuse me, our school's awarded recognitions. Mr. Scott?
Trustees, we have two fantastic partners that we want to recognize in front of you, in front of the community this evening for their contributions and for the impact of their partnership. Just me, Kent?
Absolutely. Well, can I first call up Ms. Mary Ann Barbosa, the Director of Nursing Services at Country Care Manor? Will I be able to? So, East Central High School has had the pleasure of partnering with Touchstone Communities for several years in support of our certified nursing aid program. The staff at Country Care Manor has been instrumental in helping our students learn hands-on skills with real patients. During the COVID pandemic, the facility continued to allow our students to practice in their facility, which not only taught the students how to preserve, but also gave them once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to practice healthcare during a pandemic. We are so grateful for the partnership of Touchstone and Country Care Manor. As a result of this, East Central High School Health Science Program has certified well over 200 nursing aides with the Texas Department of Health and Community Services. So, we would just like to say thank you again to all of those of your use. Next, we'd like to call up Ms. Tanya White and Amanda Dow. They are both with communities and schools, and Tanya is our Communities and School Bill Manager for ECISD, and Ms. Dow is our Site Coordinator at Legacy Middle School. Tanya worked diligently through the spring semester, attempting to coordinate a group drive for our community to provide assistance to families in the life of recent economic struggles. Through collaboration with the Basic Needs Coordinator at CIS, Tanya was able to connect with the River City Produce and organize a farmer's market that would offer fresh produce, eggs, meat, and dairy at reduced prices. Amanda stepped in to host at the market at Legacy and acted as the liaison between the campus and CIS needs, including helping coordinate the Market Day to serve the families alongside other site coordinators from East Central. Through ECISD Special Needs Funds and Dollar for Match for communities and schools, attendees were able to receive a free 18-pound bag of produce. The market served over 255 families with at least 974 total family members reported, both receiving their free produce and purchasing almost all of the reduced cost goods sold at the market. Additional boxes of produce were then delivered to East Central High School and sent home with families and students attending summer programs. Not only did the market support our EC students and families, but it contributed to the greater good of our community and support of our local farmers. So, thank you to Tonda, Tanya, and Amanda for their leadership in this project and for truly loving and advocating for our community. So, thank you very much. If any of the folks that are in attendance, if you wouldn't mind standing, I know that at CIS, I think that's some folks here to help support, y'all would mind staying also be recognized. We just want to say thank you and thank you for your support as well.
All right. So, normally we would take a break, but we're gonna go ahead and do something different tonight. We're gonna move on to item five, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do. We've got one. It's the EC cheer public comments.
Hello, everyone. I'm just, I'm Aurora Johnson, but I just want to start off by saying that our voices are a little too gone right now because you just came back from our NCAA Cheer Camp. So, please bear with us. We have some non-talkers right now. So, please bear with her. I'd just like to get started. I'm the captain of our varsity cheer team. Last year, Mr. McKay had a vision to raise a bunch of money for Alexis Lumineum, a nonprofit for childhood cancer awareness, and at the same time, fill the stadium with hope.
Hi, I'm Addison Samuel, captain of the GRC cheer team, and I'm happy to report that we helped make this vision come true and raised over $6,000 for Alexis Lumineum, and we did it by selling t-shirts to the campuses and community.
Hi, my name is Jaycee Ortiz. I am the varsity co-captain, and I'm glad to be able to say that we're back at it again. We love the idea of raising money for childhood cancer awareness and spreading school spirit by wearing gold.
Hi, my name is Jessie Romo, and I'm the Jaycee co-captain. We'd like to invite you out to the Coda game on September 9th at the high school where we will take on Smith and Valley.
Hi, I'm Lauren Pincello, and to do that, we want to make sure you're representing East Central and supporting childhood cancer awareness.
Hi, I'm Eva Barrios, and I'm excited to tell you that we have single chip to you.
I'm Emma Choggi, and this year's theme is Be Bold, Go Gold, make it this time.
Move on to item six, public hearing for our optional flexible school day program. Mr. Scott?
So, Mr. Massimo, trustee, and I'd like to call our high school principal, the president, the president, the president, to provide the board a little bit of background about the optional flexible school day program, which is intended to provide flexible hours, days, and attendance for students at 9:00 to 11:00, dropping out of high school or having business dropping out of high school. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Toscano, President Massimo, and members of the board. I'd like to take a quick moment before I get started, just to vocalize my commitment to my new role as Principal of East Central High School. I want to express my full gratitude for giving me the opportunity. I'm going to continue to serve our community, and I will, in every effort I possibly can, try to fulfill that commitment. I know the responsibility that weighs on my shoulders, and I'm going to do my best. Just wanted to, sorry to stop the college right there, but I wanted to say thank you. So, this evening, I'm here to present to you a program that you're familiar with. It's our Optional Flexible School Day Program for East Central High School and East Central ECISD. I'm going to brief you just very quickly on what it is, why we have it, and who it serves. So, first, what is it? As you are aware, this is a program that we offer at the high school to help students that are at risk for not graduating on time or not graduating at all, and even recovering students that have already not graduated. So, why do we have it? The answer is really simple, honestly. We want every single student in our community to have the opportunity to walk across that graduation stage in black and gold. But to do this, it requires that we remove barriers and some of those very uncontrollable obstacles that students face. Our goal is to provide instruction in a very flexible framework, adjusting to time, and making sure that we enable anyone to graduate, whether we're providing credit recovery or credit acceleration or reviewing for the EOC, and even giving them summer opportunities to graduate. So, who do we serve? Our students qualify for the program if they meet one of 13 state criteria for being at risk, as defined on ATC 29208, as mentioned in the agenda. Seven factors are homelessness, pregnancy, parenthood, potential incarceration, and there's many, many more. Students are provided as scheduled Monday through Friday. It's customized to meet their individual needs, hand-scheduled, child by child. They're serviced by five teachers, in math, in English, in science, in social studies, and electives, and three lab managers. They are tested online, and if you look at their data, and based on that, we design very specific programming for them. If they're not being successful, they're pulled into small group instruction or even one-on-one instruction with a teacher to help support them and again accelerate them and provide the scaffolding and the differentiation relief. It's a blended learning model, and we're very, very proud of executing in our optional flexible school day program. Last year, 2021, 2022, we had 118 students in the program, and you witnessed 61 of them walk the stage in black and gold. And that probably would not have happened if these students probably would not have graduated without the support of you and the Optional Flexible School Day Program. So, this year, our goal for '22, '23 is to have 150 students participate in the program and graduate even more of them. Currently, right now, I just checked, we do have 95 students, and as of yesterday, we're trying to get four more across the stage this summer for us. Can you answer any questions that y'all may have?
Any questions? Awesome.
Thank you.
So, being that this is a public hearing for the Optional Flexible School Day Program, is there anybody else that would like to speak on this program? All right. We will move on to item seven, trustee reports. Real quick, I have a notice for all trustees. Y'all should have one of these, and y'all should have it on DEA. So, DEA, House Bill 690 was passed by the 87th Texas Legislature, regular session in 2021. And basically, what it's requiring us for, to get a pay increase to have a school safety training requirement. So, and the kicker behind this is it has to be done by September 30th, 2022. You can see by the asterisk there, there's a highlight or a link. You go there, and so we can take this online training, because we all know we need a pay increase, and we'd like to get it. So, we have everybody need to be done by September 30th, if you don't mind. And that's what I have for trustee reports. Anybody else have any?
I don't know if my photos were added to me in the slideshow presentation, but we went to SLI, and also, I think we took board member sessions and trainings, and we also, Claudia, Victor, and I went to, we were invited to go Southside High School to be a part of the maritime, uh, one member.
Question, public, go public. Came up with the different committees. Juan Navam is the legislative committee, who Ginger's part of. I'm part of the communication. I think the website hasn't been updated in years, so we're working on getting that updated and hopefully getting more of our students' information out there. I don't know if y'all seen the billboards around town. I know there's one right here on 37th. But there are some all over, all over the city. It's a pretty good, pretty good little group of people, all board members from the entire city, so we're excited about that.
Well, I had the privilege of tagging along with the Tappy students. Yeah. And so, Whitney was able to step in and go. And so, when she said that, she was going to go to Washington, I said, hey, you know, can I go too? Capital side trip, I needed to make to R. St. Cemetery for a personal issue, but anyways, tag along for that. Plus, I wanted to see Washington and see the kids in action. So, it was amazing. They were amazing young adults, and they're looking at a future in teaching. And I mean, also to them, when they went to their final day and presented their presentation, they won first place. Yeah, and they didn't know about it. Many filmed them screaming at the table. I wish I would have had the stuff with me. But it was really a great thing to see. Those kids are really smart, and they're going to make amazing teachers. So, it was a huge group of, I mean, it was people from all over the United States. And so, it was a joy to be there, and I hope I get the opportunity to visit and do something like that again with other students, because it was very rewarding.
Talk that.
I didn't know how to talk this.
Obviously, what y'all don't know is Ginger sent me an email with some pictures from SLI, and me being me, I didn't know that I was supposed to forward them to somebody who does all the technical stuff here. And.
You don't want to see this face.
Anyway, my thought would be that Ginger didn't have her pictures up there to show us at SLI, but next time, I'll try to do a better job, and we'll get pictures next time, so. And you know, pictures worth it. Yeah, we're good. But yeah, picture's worth a thousand words, and if you can get a picture of me, you know, I'm in there, so anyway.
All right. So, does anybody else have any?
I don't. Okay, I went down to SLI, also had a great time, learned a lot of information that I'm given, back up a little bit. I also attended a lot of February graduations, which was very nice, and also attended Sinclair's. So, I've been, I try to be visible in the, in the community also. I also went through a few signings that seniors did out of jail. I was invited to come out there, and I wanted to support those seniors. And I'm always welcome when I go out to the athletic department. Miss Ariel, she recognized me, and she comes to me right away and makes sure that I'm recognized in that as anything I want, and I appreciate the warm welcome every time I go to the athletic office, or go to an athletic event. She acknowledged me as a board member also. And let me see what else I have. And also, I went to the spring, I went to the spring game too also. So, I try to be visible in, in, in the district so it can see me, and those are some of the things I did.
This is a personal update on myself, but I do want to embarrass Mr. Johnson for attending in person to your, continuing your education at Harvard. That's amazing. I know that's a lot of people's dreams to like, attend Harvard. I love all your pictures. I wish you the best of luck, and anyone else that is continuing your education. Kudos to you guys. And Ms. Ping Wei, I love you.
Love you too.
So, after that, you're at Casley, I'll try not to cry. You ever made such a difference in my kid's life, so I know you're going to make a huge difference at Casley, so I wish you the best of luck, and I can't wait to see what you all do over there. And I wish everyone also a great school year, and let's just do this.
So, this is what the, this is all about. We just started doing this. I think this is the second time of the trustee reports, just for us to relay messages to y'all, what we've been doing. I really encourage anybody that's out there, sitting here now, that if y'all have something, a pen or something, contact us through email or contact Roland. We can make what we can and can't what we can. But anyway, I really do encourage y'all to get ahold of us and give us information of what we can be a part of. Do what?
The Adopt a Campus Start Month.
Yeah, Adopt a Campus starts next month, so we will be out and about with our different campuses. So, looking forward to the new school year as well, so.
All right. Thank y'all for that, and we will move on to Superintendent's Report, 8.1, Casley Update.
Trustees, very excited to bring the team from Casley along with their new principal, Mr. Way Up, and the Executive Director of the CAS Network of Schools, to muscle up with some amazing students from the Casley program to provide a word to the community with an update. We also have a hard copy of the slide deck that we're presenting this evening, either in your, this lady's back, if you'd like to follow along.
All right. Well, I'm just going to start talking about Ashley, but before that, because first of all, I just want to thank you, Superintendent Toscano, President Matt Dale, and Board of Trustees, for having me present to you an update on Casley, which is a program we're so proud of and a partnership we're so excited to have at East Central. So, I'm the Executive Director of the CAS Schools, which is a now sixth school network. We're a nonprofit that partners with public schools to do an innovative model, and it was started many years ago. Mr. Toscano was one of the superintendents who dreamed up this big vision to create high schools that were focused on economic ability. So, we say that we're not just about college or careers, but we're about college and careers. And there's two parts to our CAS mission. The first part is to maximize options for our students. And the second part is to create new models in partnership with public school districts, so those ideas can be scaled across your district. So, we like to think of ourselves as laboratories for new ideas and practices that you can then take to scale when they work. And in fact, we are opening our sixth school in Northside this August, but we are not, we are not currently planning on opening any new schools, but to really work with y'all to test new ideas and really see what works that you can then utilize in other parts of your district. The other exciting news is that we most recently became an Asian Asian school, and so, we were awarded that by the DEA, and as part of that application, we opened up the middle grades at Casley. So, starting this year, there will be eighth grades. So, I just wanted to share a little bit, because this year at Casley, we'll have eighth through 11th grade. I know some of our results at our other schools came out, just to give you a little forecasting of how things are going. So, this, as of this year, CAS has three graduating classes from CAS Tech, the Advanced Learning Academy, which is actually our 3K through 12 school, CAS STAN, which is in Southwest ICU, is the second school we opened. And so, these are our college and career readiness outcomes, and we're very proud of them. There's one more slide missing. Okay. All right. And then, so the only thing we're super excited about is that we have a brand-new principal that's bringing a lot of new energy to the table, so I'm going to hand it over to Ashley.
I'm going to take a lead from Jeanne and not use the mic very much, because I'm a mover, and so that's going to happen. But first, just like this BK, I have to thank y'all for this opportunity. I have been at East Central Community for seven years. I came here from North Carolina for what was supposed to be a year or two adventure, and I've never left because of being family. And so, I just want everyone in the room to know that you are the reason that I'm okay being 27 hours away from my blood family, because it feels like that here. So, thank you so much for this opportunity. Very excited, Jeanne, we're excited, and a special thank you to his buddy Angeles for making me cry before 100%. I think that I have recovered, and so I'm hoping I'll do okay. And as Jeanne was mentioning, this is the first year that we've done some backwards filling, and we're inviting eighth graders along with a new cohort of ninth graders. And so, what that means is last year, we had about 92 students, and as of right now, we are at over 200 students enrolled in Casley. So, thank you to the community for trusting us with your students. We are so excited to get them ready for college, career, life, and beyond. And so, this growth is just very, very impactful, I think, not only for the individual students, but for the school as a whole. We really want our school to look like and mirror our community. We are not a specialized campus as far as requirements to get in. We are specialized in the interest of your students, and we want to provide the community with another set of options for our students to learn differently, to be able to go to a non-traditional high school. And so, yes, we are still ECISD, we are CAS Hornets, we're still Hornets, and we are very excited to be welcoming our eighth graders and our ninth graders this year. So, that being said, just a few things to review. I think this is being handed back over to Jeanne. I don't know, we were back and forth a little bit, we're going to keep you guys.
So, just to give you some of our early results. So, this is Casley now. One important, our industry-based certification, and at CAS, we make three promises. We say that students will graduate with college credit, they'll graduate with industry-recognized certifications that have value in the market. And then, the third is that we say that all students will have a meaningful, work-based learning opportunity. So, we're trying to really help students kick the tires of what they might want to do, and we engage in a very, a different teaching and learning model that involves real-world projects. We call it project-based learning with industry applications. So, these are some of the things that our ninth and 10th graders have already participated. So, 100% in, you're fine, in service learning opportunities, 11 in per se in DECA, and then a few more up on the next slide. Yeah. So, already 13% have completed their dual-credit courses. You're seeing really early success on the TSI, which is a qualifying exam to do dual credit. And already, many of our students are demonstrating college readiness. So, we believe, our core belief at CAS is that students come to us with gifts, and our job is to help them unlock those gifts. And I think it's back to you, Sammy.
So, just one really neat example that we have of our students was our students who attended the Transformational Leadership Academy. So, a little background on this, it was open to many high schools in the greater San Antonio area. I believe that they selected 70, is that correct?
I'm high.
It might not be.
But was it interview?
Oh, to interview, yes, yes. 70 to interview. So, out of all of San Antonio, 70 to interview. All six of our applicants were invited to interview, and then out of that, they chose the participants, and all six were invited to participate. And just to give you a little background, okay, because we're not just like a GT campus. 54% of our students are serviced through special education or 504. And so, these are students who are flocking to us because the way that CAS Lead teaches serves their needs and their existing. So, that's just one great accomplishment for all six of those students, and we're just so excited for them. What a representation of East Central. All right. Now, for the stars of the show, I'm going to start with the video. So, we are going to step out away and let you see what Casley is really about. These students are amazing. I have to say, over the past few weeks, since I got announced, I have received emails from students, 10th graders, introducing themselves, wanting to meet with me one-on-one and talk about their interest for this year. And so, the advocacy, because one of our pillars is student voice, and the advocacy that we've allowed within the school, that the classroom is leaking into every aspect of their lives. I cannot imagine, as a 10th grader emailing someone I don't know to ask for a one-on-one meeting so that I can talk to them about what I've been doing in my campus, because that's what it is, their campus. And they feel that way, makes me want to. So, I'm going to let them say it, because they say it better than I do. We unfortunately have one student, Sincere, who could not make it here this evening, and he was kind enough to say, you know what, though? I'm prepared. So, can I send you a video? So, I don't know if the sound is going to work. We're going to give it a go. Technology's great until it's not, so hopefully it's great today.
My name is Sincere Ginger, and I'm a consultant at Casley High, and I was given the marvelous opportunity to speak on student voice agency at Casley, and that's a very big core pillar that CAS stands on. And before I start off, I would just like to say thank you, Ms. Bosskis, for allowing me to report my response to speak on student voice agency and how it's been impacting my life and why it's so. life and why it's so important. To give to my introduction, many students love academic experience, not knowing that they have a voice and that they can use it in the classroom. That traditional learning has told many generations of students that the way we are teaching is the way you have to learn. And because of that, many students lose their voice, they lose it in terms that they can't be, oh, they can't tell the teacher, can't teach me like this, they can't go to, hold assemblies by them, so they can't go to them and say, can we go to human agency, can we do this, can we do that? It becomes really difficult for a student to feel like he has academic, he or she has academic freedom in the school they're in for that reason. They become less interested when they go to school, they lose their sense of agency, and while losing their student voice. But Cast is very, very different. Cast shows and allows the students that they have a voice and that they can use it in school. It goes as small as allowing you to walk in the hallways and allowing you to voice if you want the lights on or off in the classroom, all the way to holding assemblies and saying, where do you want to go next year for a field trip, or what do you want to see different out of us? And that's really big at Cast, because from personal experience, I can say, I was really shaken up when I first come to Cast, because I never really had an option when it came to learning, I never really had an option, can I do this, can I, can we, other group do this, can we other group do that? And it was so big, because it's something that I've never experienced before, but it's really happened to me in a positive way, because without student voice agency, I wouldn't be able to do this at, I wouldn't be able to fill my P D L. I wouldn't be able to call the really important people that I needed to last year and say, hey, we need to schedule an interview with you, when are you free, when are you this? And I wouldn't be able to record a talk to you guys to speak, unless student voice agency is so important. Another thing is, student voice agency really allows a person to grow as a speaker and allows them to grow as an intern, actually. Allows them to sit down and say, if I see something that I need to be fixed, I can go ahead and speak out on it. It doesn't show them as a person inboxing them mentally. Student voice agency is very important for that. All the other pillars really wouldn't exist without having a student voice agency. There couldn't be a group learning, because you've learned the same, you've been learning, there couldn't be ethnie, there couldn't be relationships without student voice agency, without the students having freedom, the freedom of voice, how they wish to learn. None of those things would exist, and if Cast didn't have student voice agency, it really wouldn't be Cast. It would be what you have across the street, which is East Central High School. It just shows, it just goes to show how much Cast really tries to step in and take the big steps to be better than East Central, showing that they're not like East Central, like it's not like a regular high school that is more than that, which Cast is. And I would say that student voice agency is very, very important, not for now, but for even when you go to college, even when you go to get a job. And I would say the sooner you learn a student voice agency, the sooner you practice it, the better. I mean, it shouldn't start in high school, I feel like it should start all the way from in grade school, you know? We should tell students that if you have a voice, you can use it in the classroom. It gives them that perspective that I can speak, I can do this, I can do that, that I'm not just here to fill out a packet and turn it back in. But again, that's traditional learning, and that's what traditional learning has taught people. Cast has really, again, really tried to push away from the way traditional learning is and traditional learning principles. But again, thank you, Ms. Vasquez, for allowing me to speak, thank you, you all for giving me the time, thank you guys for allowing me to speak here, and y'all have a good day.
So as we invite the rest of our students up, I wanted to say something Ms. Vasquez was kind of talking to me about. For those of you that don't know, she's kind of our superwoman over at Cast. She serves as our industry liaison, she serves as our academic dean, our A P, our A F. Pretty much every role in the office is myself, she, and the new counselor. Y'all were so kind to allow us to have. And one thing she was telling me was that our students, with their agency and voices they are using, and as Sincere was talking about, sometimes if we don't prep, our teachers say things or ask for things that they're not used to hearing. Like Sincere said, can I be taught differently, can we do this differently? So I just want to clarify, when speaking with him, that I was like, oh, we're better than East Central, huh? Because you know we are East Central. And I think what our students need is, they're experiencing something they haven't experienced in traditional school, and it's better for them. And so now, within the East Central I S D, they get to have the experience that is better for them while still getting to be a Hornet. And so that's really unique in a district that we can provide different experiences for our students based on their needs, while still, without it being an outside charter, having them be inside of East Central. Alright, let's have the rest of our stars come up here. Not from the beginning, oh, I was, there you go.
Hello, my name is Rocky Ferreira, and I'm here to talk to you about equity in Cast Lead and Cast Network as a whole. Equity plays a key role in building communities and making meaningful connections. Equity is at the root of Cast Lead and the Cast Network as a whole, and because of this, we are simply built for success. On the average day of school day at Cast Lead, you would no doubt see this in play. The staff is more than just staff, they are our mentors, confidants, and especially family. The student body is also more than just a number percentage, we're colleagues, team players, and especially young leaders. Cast Lead has implemented equity into its culture in such a major way, with an example being the staff treating us as young leaders rather than just students. We are constantly surrounded with support and with respect, no matter how big our ideas may be, and we are always provided with the tools we need to reach our success. The teaching methods at Cast Lead provide equal opportunity and is flexible to embrace each student's unique learning style, and each member of the teaching staff makes meaningful connections, which further aids us in our success. Because of this, equity will forever be a core value of mine, thanks to the success that Cast leads throughout me and my future. Thank you.
This pillar plays a huge role in our Cast Lead school system. It sounds simple, but it's relationships. This pillar is a fundamental within our Cast Lead culture. It will divide our role to aid us in turning a successful college, career, and real-world life, learning skills and experiences. This pillar is in action at Cast Lead, for example, when we have our P D L projects. When doing these projects, we learn by doing and trying. Within these projects, we learn real-world skills necessary for future success, such as communicating effectively among peers and making connections with industry professionals as well, and co-creating and building relationships within our just town community here at Cast Lead. I am confident that after my four years at Cast Lead High School, that I will go and enter the real world prepared by having these skills and connections. The Cast pillars have completely changed my academic journey and will no doubt assist me to success my future.
Do you have my notes with up to that, right? I guess we'll talk. When I first joined Cast Lead, it was because I hated the way I was being taught before high school education. I always felt like everything I did didn't matter or didn't live up to what real-world expectations they're being. Whenever I arrived, one of my first classes made us pick up an Uno card and arrange ourselves in a way in which Uno would be played. And I didn't even notice it at the time, but that was me being introduced to one of our core pillars, which is authentic learning. Authentic learning has played a huge part for many reasons. One of them, being able to retain knowledge by actually doing stuff rather than looking at worksheets and not being able to remember anything. I can say with confidence that in like fourth and eighth grade, I won't remember a single lesson, but with the authentic learning from my teachers like Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Bishop, with their experiments with balloon pressure and online essay readings, I can tell you exactly what I learned from that and why it stuck with me. The same goes for our P D L projects, which are large and take half the school year, or just a single lesson plan. And it is for that reason, and a few others, that I think authentic learning has played a huge role in my life and in my school's community.
Alright, now, like Ian said, I'm the one who has to follow them, so y'all take it easy on me, okay? So I want to talk a little bit about the future of Cast Lead and just our vision for our kids. And I have to tell you, today, we had our Rising Leaders Camp, we can't call it fish camps, they're all freshmen, right? We have eighth and ninth grade. And so being there and seeing our upperclassmen, our juniors interact with the incoming classes just blew me away. Now, keep in mind, after being in East Central I S D for seven years, I know a lot of these kids, right? I know them either from legacy, or I know them even from just being in the community when I taught at East Central High School. And so to come in and see students, done. Self-admittedly, okay, my students said, I think in the three years I knew y'all, I already said five words to you, is giving tours of the school. It's amazing what a different learning option can do for students that need it. And kind of like Ian was saying, we just want to provide our students with that opportunity, should they choose to have it. And so with our students, I feel like for our future, there are three big pieces that make Cast a great choice. Now, the first thing is that Cast isn't for everyone, right? We have three pathways, and East Central High School supports us, so that if you want to go to those pathways, you can still take part in sports, extracurricular activities. But let's say you want to go into, you know, your nursing field, and East Central High School looks like it's got the program for you, you're still a Hornet. But if you want to go in the nursing field and you want to be able to build your own practice and mail marketing and things like that, maybe Cast is the right approach for you. And so the biggest thing that I've heard from students as they talk to me about their experience is they feel seen, right? Their teachers, we're only teaching special nine right now, their teachers don't just know their names, they know their passions, they know where they had opportunities to grow, they know what they want to do and how they're changing. And because the learning is student-centered, they have to know those things, or they won't be able to teach. Also, they feel heard. You heard our students talk about student advocacy today after our Rising Stars Camp. The volunteers and juniors stayed after and met with myself, Ms. Vasquez, and one of our teachers to talk about quarter one plan. Why? Because it's coming up, and because they want their teachers to know how they learn best, how they like to show their learning, and what makes them feel that they are getting a valuable education. And so we're gonna take that feedback to our team before they start planning for the year. And then also, because you can be seen and because you can be heard, you can lead you. And we have, of course, our hashtag or our theme mark is that you can lead here, you can lead anywhere, and we really think that's true. If our teachers are teaching our students, step up in the place you are. I've heard Mr. Toscano say a thousand times, right? You grow best in the pocket of your planet. And so our students are learning to lead at Cast, and they can lead here, they can lead anywhere. So if you guys have any questions for myself or the students, we would love to take them, but thank you so much for your time tonight and letting us share with you who Cast Lead is within East Central I S D, and we are so excited to continue working with everyone. Thank you for all your support. I see so many faces in the room who have stepped up and supported me during this transition. Dr. Holman has come over a thousand times and helped me, Dr. Shannon Fuller, Judy Burr, Susan McKay, I could probably name almost everybody in this group, so I'll stop. But I really appreciate your support. East Central is a family, and Cast is a part of it, and we really feel that way, so thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You say you're a small kid.
I sure am.
You know, it sounds like you're a small kid.
You want me to put it on for you?
I didn't think you'd be there, Thomas was.
Okay, yes.
And I was looking for those kids, and I said, y'all run, you talk funny. I said, y'all never hurt yourselves ever? But they have that, that scene talk, and they talk crazy.
Well, I tell you.
And they said I spoke fast, I said, my God, you got it rapping like nobody business.
Well, in North Carolina, you gotta remember, we said on porch. So all you have to do, talk North Carolinians, is if anybody wants to do an impression, okay, you should go let your jaw slack a little bit. Once you let your jaw slack a little bit, you just start to have like, might be from North Carolina, you might be East, you might be South, you might be, and then it's pretty bad, and you're texting.
And you say, y'all come back when I.
Yep. Well, we either say, y'all come back now, or we say, bless your heart, don't.
Hey, what? Say, hey, what? Never say hi. Hey, what? What, hey, what? Fine, come on.
Oh, one day I'll have to tell you, I have so many names in my family, Clara Ellen, Eaton May, we got all, that's on my mom's side though. My dad's from Ohio, so he'd even me out, like to pull out of the axe if whatever I want, but yeah, I am, so. How do you know that?
What's that?
How do you know?
You said it. I can tell. I can tell motherfucking.
Yes, thank you.
Tell you know the trade down, we'll transition over to the right side.
I really appreciate.
Just right, thinking of your words really, I felt your words, because I know that's always been my concern, is that we teach the test, so I really, really am so happy to hear that you're actually retaining what you're learning, so that is amazing.
So you're gonna make me cry soon.
Sorry, I'm gonna make me cry maybe I don't know. Good luck this school year, guys, and to me, it was amazing.
I have one quick question, you mentioned the letters P D L, what does that stand for?
Oh, project-based learning.
Yeah, I know, but I was gonna do something different.
Judge for his house, or he was a judge. It was amazing, the way they spoke, they worked, they grew, it was awesome. You don't see many high school kids, you know, do that announcement, they have a question to ask.
Well, a year ago, I wouldn't have been able to.
You said a lot of kids are that.
Y'all accept old people.
You gotta know, it's. I'm told that I need to work on my speaking skills, I'm curious, so my wife tells me constantly, so.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Alright, we will move on to 8.2 personnel report, just gonna.
Trustees, this month's report is in your electronic packet. We'll see a lot of activity actually on the other side of the colony. Last month, we had a large list of reservations, and I promised you guys that this month we'll see a larger list of new hires. Happy to report that most of the positions we had vacated are now filled. It's been very difficult to fill in all the positions, the number of applicants that we've been able to find has not been as deep as in recent years. Although, the number of new teachers that we'll have on board this year above the 140 is very similar to the number of new teachers we've added in the last few years. We've probably got in the neighborhood of eight or nine, I don't know where the numbers sit at today, but I think we're about eight or nine positions still vacant that we hope to fill for the first day of school. Predominantly in the area of special education, that's where we're having the hardest time to find qualified candidates, and across the city, seems everybody's having some decision on this. We'll be thoughtful and innovative, taking advantage of our district's innovation, dedication as much as we can, and continuing to shape the trees. We had a hiring event last week, and we're hoping to pick a few candidates there, but we're doing all that we can, and all of our principals and directors are working hard to round out our hiring for the year, but they've done the exceptional job at very different times than we gave them today. We introduced our welcome committee, Ms. Vasquez and I did, along with the rest of the team this weekend. They're talented, they're eager, much, and despite the fact the candidate pool wasn't as deep, they did an exceptional job, all of our principals and staff across the district for the hiring, just to maybe, we're looking forward to it. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have about any of those candidates or if you'd like any additional information.
Alright, we will move on to 8.3, policy update 119.
Bringing the board policy update 119 for the first reading. It's about 500 pages, it's a set of four policy updates. Cameron just had it up to put a copy of the explanatory notes in your miscellaneous packet. Of course, they're also in your electronic packet, beginning of last page 11 of the year. And again, the explanatory notes are a real good overview of the policy itself and the recommended changes, and if it sparks your interest and you want to see the entire policy recommendations, it's in the electronic packet between now and next month. Between now and next month, if you have any questions, you can write additional information on any of those policies that you know. We'll get that for you. Our staff are combing through those policies and adopting, making revisions and suggestions throughout the month. We'll bring you a completed version of our recommendation back next month for your consideration and possible approval.
We will eight point four, a couple events, Mr. Stasana.
Here, this ladies' packet trustees, just take a really quick look at the August calendar. I want to call your attention. First, Tuesday, the second, that's the district kickoff at the Patterson. We'll have a full house in there, late 30, 10:30, but we'll also have watch parties going on in the high school cafeteria. The high school staff will be in the Legacy and Heritage Cafeteria as well, I believe, we're coming together, we're starting to, both campuses. How many have, awesome, so Legacy and Heritage will be at Heritage, we'll have a full house there. So, we're gonna try something a little bit different in that regard. We also have meet the teacher events. They're listed over the third, fourth, and fifth in that, on the calendar, but those aren't the dates. They're actually August 2nd, January 11th, and 12th. But wanted to make sure that we had those, because I know you guys are doing the process of adopting schools next month. And so, you'll want to definitely take note of the future events at each of the campuses and attend, if at all possible. Looking further down the month, the first to the school, pardon the lead, is already upon us, it's the 15th of August. Registration has already been going on, and high schools have prep days this week, and it's been a crowd. The 18th is your next regularly scheduled board meeting. And definitely want you to mark your calendar for the 24th, 7:00 PM at the stadium. Will be this year's meet the hornets, you can see the calendar riddled with all kinds of fall athletic activities that have already begun or are in the process of beginning, volleyball tennis, and of course, football, all of the things that happen cross-country that happen at this time of year. And so, it'll meet all of those student athletes and their coaches, along with many other programs, students and their sponsors at that meet the hornets event as we do every year. And of course, we always have a great turnout from the community, so it's an event definitely on the, we have to answer your questions or what happened about any of the events that are going on in August. And again, you also have your refrigerator-friendly vertical list of all the activities that you prefer that style. One other thing while we're on, another event, Camry also provided a year to glance. This has your board meetings starting this month through next June. And we just lifted out the really big, the really big items that the board undertakes at pivotal points in the year. So, that way, for your planning purposes, you can see when the big items happen throughout the, the year. And then the more fine detail we'll give you in the calendar, like the disreview. Thanks for that representation.
My wife will be very pleased. Thank you, thank you. All right, we were gonna move on to the actions attendant items. We'll start with nine point three, Consider and Take Actions of Order, the November 8th, 2022 trustee election for single member districts 1, 2, 5, and 7. Ms. Stasana.
Yes, Ms. Vasquez, as you mentioned, this is the time where we present the board with consideration. We take action of order, the November 8th, 2022 trustee election. Today will involve single member districts 1, 2, 5, and 7. Fair County Election will administer both early voting and election day. We'll be coming back to you next month with a request for allowing me to negotiate the terms of that contractual partnership between us and Fair County Elections, in the interest of the minister and the, the, the voting process, but also providing, you know, call statements to the vision. So, with that, are there any questions the board might have about the election order?
Mr. President, I recommend the board approval of the election orders presented. We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the election order as presented. Do I have a motion? Go ahead. Have a motion from Victor Garza, have a second from Claudia Baranenfles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to nine point two, approval of architectural design and construction administration services, work related to outdoor learning spaces at Salado and Harmony Elementary. Ms. Stasana.
Trustees, if you'll recall, we were able to secure another grant from Pre-K SA, which is going to enable us to continue to expand our effort to provide outdoor learning spaces at our elementary campuses. So, this will also sound very familiar, because it's the same process we went through to provide architectural services for the outdoor learning space at St. Clair, which we're very excited about providing for the students this year. Of course, you see Mr. Johnson might jump out of his seat after. But we're just as excited, we're now going to be able to do the same thing at Salado and Harmony Elementary School this year. And so, what we're bringing to you this evening is a recommendation or contract for professional services, for architectural services based on demonstrated competence and qualifications for performing services at a fair and reasonable price. The district is working with Bender Wells Park Design on the St. Clair Outdoor Learning Project, and they've got experience with similar projects in Edgewood ISD, as well as the city of San Antonio. The fees for those services we negotiated follow the board's decision this evening, and it'll be based on the basically scheduled architectural services that was previously adopted by the board. We'd be happy to answer any further questions the board might have. The grant was for 1.5 trillion. It took, is this last grant?
Almost close to a million. Over two years.
Over two years.
And the, the outdoor learning spaces.
350.
They're coming in around, they're coming in around 300,000 now in construction, installation.
Construction policies.
They're originally around 250, they're pushing beyond 300 to 350 now. And again, our plan is to add to a year.
We'll continue, second subject, those two years, continue to apply for grants.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I recommend board approval selecting Bender Wells Park Design to provide architectural design and construction administration services related to outdoor learning spaces at Salado Elementary Elementary.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the selecting of Bender Wells Park Design to provide architectural design and construction administration services related to outdoor learning spaces at Salado and Harmony Elementary Schools. Do I have a motion?
Go ahead.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza, who would have a second. Have a second from Claudia Baranenfles. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to item nine point three, approval of architectural design and construction administration services work related to new elementary school. Ms. Stasana.
Yes, our trustees, as you're aware, in the north sector of our community, we're, we've been seeing rapid residential development and rapid enrollment growth, particularly in Tradition Elementary School. We've added the portable classrooms this year, and because we were unable to get the bond last November across the line, it's put us in a pretty tough position where we have to get very aggressive about our strategy for hopefully providing relief in the north sector of our district at Tradition Elementary. So, after reviewing our options with our architect, architectural team from LPA, who helped us design Tradition and administer that project program in 2016, the board was presented with a few options. Traditionally, when an upcoming bond program was being considered, we would wait to see if the community supported that bond. And if they did, then we would begin designing, sort of designing the project program, which would take about six months before we were ready to take those project programs for the morning. In this particular case, if we do that, at the very best, the very best-case scenario, we would complete construction of North Elementary in the middle of a school year, which is not optimal time to open the school. And so, what it could function, what it function to do is cause us to wait until the following fall, losing an entire school year. And because of our precarious position, we determined that it's in our best interest to make an investment in designing North Elementary prior to a bond being passed or not, so that in the event that it passes, we're ready to go to market immediately, and we can gain back that six months, which means we'll finish that school over the summer with the ability to open it that fall as opposed to waiting for the following fall. So, we feel like it's, not only in our best interest, we feel like we have no other option, given our, our circumstances. We have the growth and the enrollment challenges that we're having at Tradition. And so, what I'm proposing tonight for board consideration is to consider hiring LPA to provide designs and architectural services for North Elementary, and asking if you guys hire them tonight to authorize me to negotiate the contract. And for that contract cost, that scope of work not to exceed 1.2 billion dollars, but also to give me the ability then to consider the delivery method, negotiating the delivery method, which is, we're recommending a construction manager have risk. And so, we have a partner from LPA, Carlos, with us tonight. Of course, we have John Thomas and Steve and the team. Together, we'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have. I know all of this is familiar to you, but I just wanted to make sure that I brought it all together, because it's a very, it's a very aggressive strategy. And what I want to point out is if it passes, we're in a really good position. And if it does not, we would have to design North Elementary for any point in time the community was ready to support the construction of that school, so we would be able to share that design. And we would own it, but we'd have to pay for it and fund that. So, that's kind of where we're at.
Would there be, what would be the possible changes due to how they're instead of passing? Would that work as it is, just pull off the shelf, or are they, is there any guesses that work kind of changes without doing that? Is that costing?
So, Carlos, we probably speak to that. I'll say that from a design standpoint, we feel like we've done our due diligence. We've done a close occupancy evaluation, and we work on the better part of the year with the Tradition plan. So, again, this is pretty much the Tradition template, but we, we spoke to all the users. They said, what's working well, what's not, what amendments should we make to the design? So, they do work, and we, and we work through that process with not just staff at Tradition, the disco director team, the teachers, et cetera, but all of our special programs as well, special education, physical education, child nutrition, maintenance, technology, Dr. D and his team. And we really dissected every unit of Tradition now that it's been limited, to make sure that we, you know, make it that check. So, from a design standpoint, we really feel like it's refined and appointed, there won't be major changes there. But as far as what happens, Carlos, we've got a way to help the users pull it back off the shelf for additional cost outside of construction, cost escalation, we talked about that.
That's really what you're looking at, is, is cost. Yeah, you'll extend it probably a half percent per month is what you're looking at.
Construction cost?
Yes, ma'am. Plus or minus, we don't know, like we talked about, it's a roller coaster right now. But that, the only change will be just cost.
Design will hold.
Yes, ma'am. We long for, like Carlos said, we went through the exercise with all the users, and we can hopefully address all the needs in relation to what they have in Tradition and what the new elementary schools need. So, we went through that exercise the last two months, and we had positive feedback from everybody. So, we, we should have everything aligned, and hopefully, we have success in the long run, it's just going to be cost.
I think this is a good plan.
Mr. President, I move that the board select LPA Incorporated for the North Elementary School project, including initial pre-bond design services for the project based on their demonstrated competence and qualifications, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with the architect in form approved by league council for the district for a fair and reasonable price in accordance with Texas government code 2254 dot two zero four B, not to exceed 1.2 billion dollars. And further select construction manager at risk as the delivery method for procurement and construction services for the North Elementary School project in accordance with Texas government code 2269.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to select LPA Incorporated for the North Elementary School project, including initial pre-bond design services for the project based on their demonstrated competence and qualifications, and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with the architect in a form approved by league council for the district for a fair and reasonable price in accordance with Texas government code 2254 point zero zero four B, not to exceed 1.2 billion dollars. And further, select it, C R as a delivery method for the procurement and construction services for the North Elementary School project in accordance with Texas government code 2269. Do I have any motion?
I will.
Have a motion from Delil. Give it a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Are you good? I never miss our meeting, I said my foot come out, so. All right, well, we move on to nine point four, 2022, 2023 district annual results measure. Ms. Stasana.
Yes, I'd like to call Dr. Shannon Fuller, podium, this time to advise the board with an overview of the district's annual results measures for the 2022, 2023, through the year. Of course, this is also very familiar to the board, as we had a goal-setting workshop previously to perform our direction. Since that time, our team has worked diligently through our continuous growth process to establish these annual results measure, measures, followed by this item in nine point five. We'll show you how they've cascaded through our campus annual results measures.
Good evening, President Vasquez, Ms. Stasana, members of the board. As you just kind of shared, we are continuing in our continuous growth process, and we have wrapped up our needs assessment. And so, our team has come together to listen to needs of the district and determine on seven areas that, of goals that we'll be working on this year to help to meet the needs of what we see are high priorities. These priorities cascade off of your goal to have an exceptional learning environment. And so, I believe you have the hair copy of this, or is it just there?
Um, it is actually in their electronic packet.
Okay, it's in your electronic packet, so I'll have it up here for you. So, as you can see up here, you have the, the first two goals are a priority area one, which is teaching and learning environments. The first goal centers around that we are going to make sure that the systems that we have for our teaching and learning environments, that we create strong systems across our district and within our campuses to, and those systems, our campuses and our departments are going to pick those that they don't feel that they maybe work on, and make a plan to make sure that they are reaching fidelity to those areas. And those can look anything from planning to safety and security, to recording practices, comprehensive case management, purchasing, inventory. All of those are examples of systems that we've identified in our district as priority systems that help us do our business very effectively to make sure that our students have the best quality education. And so, those are, those are the best, centers around for prior, our first goal, pardon one. Our second goal is around professional development, and our goal, sorry, too fast, sorry. This goal is about making sure that all staff have the knowledge and skills that they need to be able to execute their task. So, each campus and department leader will make sure that they will identify what are those knowledge and skills that those teachers, leaders, and staff need in their campus or departments across the district for this year to make sure that they're successful. They are creating a staff development, professional development plan for the year. They're creating a staff development, professional development plan for the year, and then they will execute that plan to make sure that everybody's successful in their jobs this year. And so that's, that's, that's our goal number two. Then we look into priority area number two, and this is about a high engagement workforce. We have three goals in this area. The first goal and the third goal are very, are kind of coincide. The first one is about creating a vacancy plan and creating a strong bench. And so you've heard our discussion with our work around Goldsworth to really talk about being able to project out what are those areas that we think we might have vacancies in, and then creating a plan to fill those vacancies with high, highly qualified staff. And so our goal is to make sure that every campus and department creates that vacancy projection and then build a bench so that we have people that are ready to move into and apply for any vacancies that we might have, so we're ready and prepared when we have new positions that come available and more vacancies that come available. And then along with that, the third goal really talks about that ready ratio of ready leaders to the alignment, and that we really want to look at making sure that our ready leader demographics match those demographics of our students. So as we're creating that ready bench, that we're looking at and we're preparing those that are ready, we're looking at our student demographics, and we're looking to see, does our bench match and mirror our student demographics, and being really thoughtful and competent about that as we're helping to grow our leaders and as leaders are asked to join either aspiring programs or showing interest, and so we're being very thoughtful about that. And then the second one talks about staff engagement. We know that happy employees are employees that stay with us, and so we want our employees to feel engaged in their work, we want them to feel that it is meaningful, and that they really find value in the work that they do. And so we are working to really tap into that staff engagement, to see if we're able to breathe, do they feel engaged, and then putting plans in place to make sure that we increase that engagement over time. The third priority is around inclusive and collaborative partnerships. And so one example of those is you heard tonight is Creepin' for SA, where we've gotten grants from that. And so we've really worked at how do we continue to increase student and community partnerships and engagement, and looking at our data from that. And so some of the examples from that is how are we going to use mutually beneficial partnerships and data that we have gathered to help make sure that we are continuing to increase both campuses partnerships as well as our department partnerships, so that our community engagement data continues to increase, and we continue to grow those partnerships so that the district benefits from it as well as our partners benefit from it. And so we have that continuous relationship with them, so that ultimately our students will have those opportunities. And then the last one is priority area four, our resources and operational excellence. And this is all about our fiscal responsibility. And so we've worked really hard under leadership of these firms to really look at the good stewards of our finances and making sure that we have fidelity to our district financial management systems. This goes everything from our inventory systems to a P box, to transfinder. When we buy things, that we make sure that we have replacement schedules for them, so that we are planning ahead, so that everybody has what they have when they need it, and we're not caught off guard when technology goes out of, that needs to be replaced, or uniforms need to be replaced, but we have a plan for one year, two year, three year, four years out, so that everybody has what they need. And so those are the seven areas that we're going to be focusing on as a district throughout the year. And then, do you stop there? Do you stop there? Campus is next.
She was curious about the drop down.
Oh, okay. The drop down, so what these are next opportunities, because you know I come to you each quarter and give you an update? So this is where your updates are going to go. So I'm going to be coming to you and like here, and this is going to say, are we on track? Are we making progress? Are we not making progress or not yet? And so each quarter, when I come to do my quarter updates for you, this will be the quarter one updates, and they're in columns D and D, and then quarter two, quarter three, and quarter four. Any questions out there?
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approval of the 2022-2023 District Annual Results Measures as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the 2022-2023 District Annual Results Measures. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza. I have a second. Second from Claudia Baranitos. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Move on to 9.5, 2022-2023 Campus Annual Results Measure. Mr. Scott.
All right, so then the next, yeah, the next one is, and I'm not going to go through each one of these, but what the, the next aspect is, is that the campus then creates their own annual results measure. So they go through the very similar process that we just did. They take their needs assessment, they look at specifically what do their campus need to work on for this year, those high priority areas. They look at the district goal of exceptional learning environment. They look at these seven goals that the district has put forth, and then they cascade down to their own campus. They, they take some of these, and then they add to and or put a twist on what specifically will their campus be focused on based on what they show up, what shows up as specific needs for their campus. And so attached to your board look, you have each one of the individual campus, individual campus annual results measures for you to review and review tonight.
President? I recommend, I recommend a motion.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeff. President, I recommend board approval for 2022-2023 Campus Annual Results Measures as presented.
I have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the 2022-2023 Campus Annual Results Measures as presented. I have a motion from Lieutenant Garza, I have a second. I have a second from Julia Krupf. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. That, we will recall to 9.6, Budget Amendment 2021-2022, number six, local maintenance. Mr. Scott.
Sir, trustees, this is a continuation of our L.A. v. Xplain project program. As you were aware, we've been working on replacing the impact systems at Legacy Harmony and Opress. The board has previously approved a budget amendment to cover the cost of the equipment for those replacements. And what we're bringing to you tonight is an amendment for 684,922 dollars for the labor cost to install or replace a big truck, units at Legacy Harmony and Opress. Keep it in mind that these dollars will be 100% covered by the insurance company. Do you have any answer any questions about that? The board is going to work this session. Mr. President, I recommend board approval, Budget Amendment 2021-2022, number six, local maintenance as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve the Budget Amendment 2021-2022, number six, local maintenance as presented. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion from Del Brazil. I have a second from Mr. Victor Garza. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda meetings. Is there anyone that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would. I'd like to pull consent agenda, 2023, CFSI information, just waiting through the packet, so we can, amazing piece, I must say.
Sure, sure. So as you can see on that particular item, a gentleman by the name of Zachary James donated 32,948 dollars worth of science lab equipment. Our science specialist, along with the science staff from high school and our two middle schools reviewed the potential donation of the equipment to see if it was usable. And our chemistry teachers, biology teachers, physics, aquatic science, anatomy, and microbiology teachers were ecstatic because this included a huge number of triple beam balances, a huge number of lab, lab safety equipment, including goggles, a large number of plate plates and scales and microscopes, pallets, a pallet, microscopes, not more than a pallet. And essentially, we have a gentleman here who, whose business involves trading and purchasing large bulk items on eBay, and he needed a tax break and wanted to make a donation to the school district to accomplish that. And so he wrote a check with 32,948 dollars worth of science equipment and asked if we could use it. And after reviewing it, we found it high use. And so we are very excited and grateful for the donation. Our staff is eager to get these things in their labs, and we're happy to bring to you for your consideration this evening. Because it is over 5,000 dollars, the board has to accept it.
There's no issues there, no issues.
Mr. President, I recommend the board approval of the donation of science equipment and supplies as presented.
We have a recommendation from the superintendent to accept the donation of science supplies as presented. Do I have a motion?
No.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza, I have a second. I have a second from Ginger Friesman. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, is there anything, anyone that would like to pull anything else from the consent agenda? All right. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
No.
I have a motion from Mr. Victor Garza, second. I have a second from Claudia Baranitos. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to the last item. So tonight, November 11th, something I'm adding. That, for trustees, on July 28th, 2022, beginning at 8:01 PM, we named in a meeting on course with the Texas Board of Meeting Act, felony sentencing by side one on Hill 74, to discuss superintendent evaluation. Board meeting is closed meeting at 9:06 PM on July 28th, 2022, no action taken in closed meeting. Six. Move on to adjournments, do I have a motion for adjournments? I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
All in.
All opposed? Motion carries.